For Tuesday, January second, twenty twenty four. Happy New Year all, uh, hard to believe, twenty twenty four. How many times will I, how many times will I write twenty twenty three on the check register, right?
Once or twice.
Yeah, a couple of times. Um, all right. First order of business is, uh, pledge allegiance, Charles.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. And to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Charles. Uh, item two, public forum. Uh, anyone wishing to address the board on any of the agenda items? Hearing none, let's move on to item three, approved minutes, uh, December eighteenth, twenty twenty three, regular meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
A second? Comments, questions, changes, et cetera? Hearing none. Let me try your minds. Uh, all in favor? That motion carries unanimously, I suspect.
Sorry, thank you.
Well, as I always have to say to Tony, I know the problem is somewhere between the keep work and the chair.
No, moves and the controls.
Yeah, that's even worse, exactly. Um, item four, uh, discuss and take pass, uh, possible action on the use of, uh, ARPA funds for septic needs at three ten State Street. Um, that, did you guys receive the correspondence on that?
I didn't see some, no.
Okay.
I was trying to figure out what we can state to plus.
Station hollow right now.
Oh.
That is, that is safe since hollow, so. I, I originally, I wanted to have this up as a point of discussion. They've had a catastrophic, not catastrophic, but a, uh, system failure. Laurie, you want to come up to the table and just give a little background? Thank you for coming in on Tuesday to. It feels like Monday.
What do you do here? Yes, so when they do it, uh, doing the annual cleaning of the septic system, uh, there's three tanks. One was clean, two was clean, they went into three and there was nothing in there. So that means there's a leak somewhere or a crack in the, uh, one of those tanks. So this is, we have three.
Thank you.
Invoices as to repair them, quotes, uh, and one in particular, we would like to use Fisher, uh, because they're doing some tree removal or some other things also.
Who's that?
That just happened two, three weeks ago.
Right, right. And I know, I know, I'd received some correspondence on it. The last I knew, we didn't have all three bids at the.
That's, I think one just came in last week with the third bid.
Okay.
Which was, it was thirty eight, thirty eight and thirty five.
And you're gonna go with Fisher at this point?
Yes.
Okay, if you want to go with Fisher. I think this is probably a pretty good use of American Rescue Plan Funds because these, this would basically eviscerate their, uh, their fund balance.
Well, and we're also, uh, we're aiming to fix the roof at Boston Terrace, which is a great amount of money.
Right.
A hundred thousand dollars.
You know, unfortunately, we did not get a Steve Grant for that. We applied for a Steve Grant for, uh, the roof and, uh, uh, that, that needed to be replaced and we did not get it. We have it on pretty good authority. Probably get a, we could get a Steve Grant next year.
Sure.
Uh, I don't know what the timeline is on that. So I wanted, we don't have a formal document that, for review, obviously, but, uh, I wanted to talk about the concept of paying for it out of American Rescue Plan Funds. We still have one, like, four million dollars in that.
It'll fit into all the parameters of these funds.
Absolutely. Infrastructure. This will be considered.
Think of repair of infrastructure, right? I, I think it's a good opportunity to make sure that we're done yet.
I see. Yeah, so what I'd like to do is we'll get the, uh, we'll get the documents in, we'll have, uh, uh, we'll have, we'll have the town put some eyes on it just to make sure. But, uh, I, I'd say, if we wanted to do something, we could allocate up to forty thousand in American Rescue Plan Funds, uh, for the potential replacement of the septic system. Install system or just the tank?
Well, there's three tanks, so they, they're gonna do all three, since one.
Yeah, got it. Makes sense. Yes.
Uh, but, uh, Terry Vivesi, the executive director, who emailed you all, that was the first one was, two, and then the, just last week, she, uh, placed a third email to you.
Okay.
I, I don't know.
I think, um, that project was early two thousands.
It was two thousand seven, I think that it was finished or something, so I don't know.
Went to the groundbreaking, so maybe that was two thousand five, yeah.
So, so if one of the three failed, I'm sure they looked at the other two as well.
And it felt, we felt three companies said around that same price to replace it.
But I'm thinking of the other two tanks, like, three tanks. They're all the same age.
Yeah.
This, they're gonna replace all three though?
Yes, oh, all three, I see.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah, I got that.
I mean, is it, uh, you must know what they're doing anyways. They must know what the issue is. When you said the third one was.
Was cracked. It was cracked.
Know it's officially cracked. So then my question becomes, is it like? I mean, it, the, the, that water and everything went somewhere. Does that mean that all it's sort of, is there gonna be a remediation? I know it's not an oil tank, but it's gotta be a certain amount of contaminants in there. It's, does that include, when they get in there, potentially they gotta, you know, replace all of the earth around it and that type of thing? Are there contingencies?
I don't know.
Might be, but, yeah, the way to put that in the motion so that if that kind of stuff happens, I mean, that could double the cost.
Yeah, well, we could, uh, certainly have a motion said that this is, uh, our best estimate for, uh, cover the cost, but would be committed to, additional funds if necessary.
They're gonna do all three. It sounds like they're gonna excavate the entire area anyway.
Yeah. They're probably gonna have to stage that because you can't shut down the entire septic system all at once, right?
I assume so. I mean, I guess so.
You wish your civil. Folks hope so. That's why I'd like to get, uh, Steve's eyes on this, uh, just, uh, Steve Nyedorf. Uh, I'm not sure we need to go to the link to the Standing Building Committee, but at least our building expert who's well versed in septic issues.
Well, the other thing is twenty year old tanks, maybe the standards have changed, rates have changed, yeah.
Well, I do know, um, twenty years ago, the, the standards for twenty years ago to now have lessened. They don't need as much acreage or septic system, because we had, we're going through that because, um, Charlie's Closet wants, uh, their own tank were to come in with us.
And they're more efficient, is what's happening. I mean, the way that.
Okay.
There's baffle systems that they put in as opposed to these things, you should just spread them all over the place.
Okay.
And isn't the low use water.
Yeah, that probably makes a difference, too. Yep, sure.
So there's no kind of a mechanism for having a fund balance or reserve or things like this, not related to the ARPA funding at all, but it's curious.
We do have a savings account. We did just raise everyone's rent, uh, fifty dollars in twenty five dollar increments, and that's like every four or five years, so, and, uh, that was, you know, a burden on a lot of them.
Yeah.
But we had no choice, so.
Your points will take, you know, uh, I mean, how you not have funds available for something like this. Now, you had that, Gloria, when she first talked about this, uh, suggested that this would basically, uh, wipe out most of it.
Yeah, most, yep. And, and also, like, you know, saving for the roof, uh, too. And there's, don't forget, there's three Boston Terrace, uh, Go for it.
And if we, and again, we're gonna try to continue to try to get some grant funds for that, through Steve, uh.
Well, thank you for your consideration of this one.
Appreciate it.
Would there be grant funds available for this?
Uh, don't know. And, and the timeline on getting those, we can, we can certainly look into.
That's saying, you know, it might be after.
We can, we can certainly look into see if there are some grant funds.
Just a, on a side note, I believe we have till twenty twenty six to commit the ARPA money.
Twenty, end of twenty twenty four to commit.
Well, that's what I meant, like, that's it. I used the wrong word, yeah. By the end of this year, we have to have it all pretty parsed out, if not.
Committing and or purchase orders issued against that.
Right, okay.
Which will be a, a topic of conversation at an upcoming, uh, Board of Selectment meeting, as to how do we effectively allocate, uh, some of those, those funds? How do we potentially use those to, uh, to force capital, which also. All right, so is there a motion, uh, as I roughly outlined, to approve up to, uh, forty thousand dollars with the possibility that if, provide additional funding?
Oh, second.
Second. Any further comments or questions? Uh, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thanks for the work.
Thank you. Happy New Year once again.
You voted aye.
Okay. All right, item five, discuss and take possible action. There's been a vote from a December eighteenth, twenty twenty three meeting to waive the bidding and contract with the total mechanical for ductwork modifications on air handling units five and six at Baldwin Middle School. Just a little bit of background. After the meeting, Pete and I had some conversations and neither were so comfortable with the process, the way it was represented. Uh, it was originally represented as a change order, but it, it is not a change order because this is a completely separate, uh, vendor. Uh, so, uh, yeah, uh, was, remember they went out to bid because they were unhappy with, uh, the underlying provider who had missed, uh, the.
The size of the ducts.
Yeah, size of the duct. So, uh, Pete, you wanna comment here?
Yes, good morning. Um, I did speak with Cliff about this one, um, and I think what happened here is, you know, you know, they had some additional duct work that's required at, uh, Baldwin Middle School. He went to the, um, to the contractor who did the initial work and got a price which would qualify for a, you know, a change order, uh, exception if, uh, upon your approval. And then he, but with that price, he, uh, reached out to a couple of other vendors, two more, uh, put in a, you know, a quote on the project, one of which was substantially lower. And, uh, as I understand it, he ran it past the Standing Building Committee who, uh, approved it. So, I, you know, I think his intentions were good, obviously, here, and I think he, he thought since it started off as a, uh, change order, uh, that it, you know, it could potentially be approved. However, we really don't have an exception, um, that fits this under our purchasing policy. Uh, so, you know, after discussion with him, uh, I asked him and he agreed that, uh, let's put it out to bid i- in a formal way. Uh, with that, I don't think we should have what appears to be an approval, uh, outstanding by the Board of Selectment on, with a different contract with a different vendor. So that's why I asked Matt to put it on the agenda for a rescission vote today.
Why don't the mechanic, can we, we rescind that vote? They're gonna send it out to bid and go through the cycle.
They're gonna have to go through a more formal process, uh, and also, at some point, we have to approve it, uh, because we approve something that, uh, Pete says is not within our powers to do so.
Okay, two questions that. I mean, these people could obviously rebid, because I thought they, he had said that, you know, there's, I don't know if this was the one, I didn't go back and look, that they didn't want to bid, that this was the, not only a new bidder, but was the only bidder.
No, they were, they, they did have three bids, right, Pete?
That, that, that's right.
Let's, let's call them their quotes, not bids.
Quote, quotes, yeah.
All right, so it just goes back in the cycle. Any time you want, as far as getting it done, because it's an ongoing struggle.
Yeah, I don't suspect another, the, one delay is gonna, you know, make a significant.
To, I, I live, if I'm not mistaken, Susan brought it up in the initial approval, you know, we're not enthusiastic about all the change, of course, just re emphasize.
All right, any other questions repeated this? So was there a motion to rescind? A second? A second, second. Any further comments or questions? Anything else, Pete, or are we?
You know, uh, Matt, I'll just mention that we don't have, uh, like, a provision that allows a waiver, you know, just in the general best interest of the town. Um, and you and I could talk about whether you would want to include something like that. Um, but for today, I have no other comment except I, I do think that rescission of this particular vote is appropriate.
Right. Yeah, Pete, why don't we, uh, you and I did talk about this briefly, uh, last week, but, uh, the week before, I can't remember. Um, let's, uh, let, let's put some language around the, the creation of an exception to that degree, so that we can use it if we need to. Uh, but, you know, I'd rather not rely on it.
Correct. All right.
You get, you get to a point where it defeats the purpose of having bid requirements. We, we're waiving the bid requirements so often.
Right.
You know, and especially these items from, on the school projects that they always seem rushed, we, we're looking to the Standing Building Committee for their input, and it's not in a way that we can re-access that and.
Right, and, and I think this is part of a larger discussion that Pete and I have had relative to, uh, looking at our purchasing policy and changing some of the thresholds. There's some statutory, uh, uh, limitations as to how far we can go on a, uh, not requiring a bid. I think that's what, twenty five thousand, Pete? Is that, is that legislatively defined?
Yes, uh, no, those lower numbers for, you know, three quotes and so forth, um, can be changed, but the twenty five thousand for, uh, competitive bid process, uh, is statutory at this point.
Okay, anything further? You have a question on the floor with a second? Uh, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Uh, item six, uh, discussion on a resolution to a property tax issue for Joseph Drive, uh, map one oh nine, lot thirty six C, that dates back to two thousand and seven. Uh, the accessories office came in to talk to me about this briefly last week. Uh, putting it on the agenda might have been a bit premature, but I just wanted to, uh, get you guys, uh, familiar with it. It's a small little parcel of property, um, up off of Joseph Drive, I think it is. Um, that, um, seems to be, uh, seems not to have a, a defined owner. Uh, and we've been trying to collect the taxes on it for, uh, since two thousand and seven. Uh, we're not talking about an awful lot of money. I think it's twelve hundred dollars over that, uh, that period of time. So my thought was, uh, but if, if in fact, uh, it is, the town has, it, it owns that property, um, we want to put it out to bid. So what we're probably gonna wind up doing, uh, based on Janice's recommendation, is to do a title search on that property, because, uh, we, there, there are conflicting records with, uh, within the, uh, clerk's office relative to this property, so, uh, to clean it up, get it off our books, uh, we're probably gonna do a title search on it, uh, so. Oh, it's about point one acres. It's a little triangular piece. I don't know, can you see?
There's no building on it.
It's not, it's not a building on, so.
The neighbors are proud.
Well, one of the two, one of the two of my neighbors, most likely, would still have to go through the regular process, though, and, uh, and, and, and want solicit bids, but, uh. It's up north. It's interesting. It looks like there had been a cul-de-sac, and then the cul-de-sac.
Oh, yeah.
If you scroll down, yeah. Because, you know, the, the dark, the dark line that goes off to the left is a shared driveway, uh, but, uh, balance of the road goes, uh, goes, goes to the, to the right.
And what's, nobody thinks they own it?
No, well, at least, at least the person we think owns it, based on records, says that they don't own it, and we can't find the, the owner.
Versus as they never.
Part of that lot, where the driveway happened to go in right away.
Barbara, Barbara Hammerlin, who's been dealing with this over the years, was trying to get this cleaned up before she, see, in a couple of weeks. This is one of those things that she wanted, she brought to my attention.
All right, so it wasn't unexpected. I was wondering if there could be other parcels that we should clean up, but.
Well, I'm sure there may be, we just need time to tumble on. Okay, all right, uh, so, is there a motion at the table?
Some will be. Second.
Uh, good, I'm gonna try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, item seven, discuss and take possible action to set a town meeting date, January sixteenth, twenty twenty four, at eight fifteen AM. Go for Town Hall, thirty one Park Street for the purchase of twenty four acres in a conservation easement, but on three and a half acres of land located on Tanner Marsh Road, identified on the Sessors Map seventy five, lot thirty seven, in the amount of six hundred twenty nine thousand, six hundred and twenty five dollars. Just as a point of clarification, we've known this as the Sullivan property discussions we've had over the last eighteen months, if not longer, uh, so we finally come to an agreement on it. Uh, so is there a motion to set the town?
Some will.
A second?
Second.
Uh, anything further comments or questions? Um, let me try, let me try your minds, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. Okay, uh, the next up. This will come as no surprise. Hopefully, uh, some of us will be together this evening in celebration of, uh, Rick Maynard's, uh, busters for, uh, we have a proclamation in front of us, uh, for Rick Maynard, and I will, I, 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 I think I'll waive the reading. Can I get a motion to waive the reading on the entire proclamation?
Official motion?
Yeah, yeah, um, so, let me just read the last one. Therefore, we, we're selected here by honor and extend our heartfelt thanks and appreciation to Rick Maynard in honor of his thirty two years of service at Towne Gelfen. Uh, so is there a motion to approve the proclamation? A second?
Second.
All seconds, all seconds all around?
Yep.
Okay.
It's like it's only one page long, it's not long enough.
Yeah, right, well done.
He was running around yesterday for the four, five K.
Heartless. Let me, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
And that motion carries. Uh, item eight, appointments and resignations. Uh, act on a resignation received from Ava Besmer, from the inland weapons commission. Zero motion.
I'll make the motion with regret.
With regret and appreciation.
Yeah, appreciation.
Great, and there's a second, I heard. Uh, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. Uh, nine dot two, act on a resignation received from Rose Robin, from, from Robinson, from the historic district commission.
Likewise, with appreciation and regret, I'll make the motion to accept.
And I'll second it as well, uh. Let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. Well, this didn't take long. Uh, act on the appointment of Rick Maynard to the Standing Field.
No grass.
Oh, there's a good pun in there, actually. Yeah, regrets he was leaving his job.
But no grass growing under his feet, or maybe there is. That would only be a Rick pun.
Great.
All right, uh, motion made a seconded, uh, let me try your minds, all in favor? That motion carries. Uh, well done, Lou. Uh, item ten, request of use of town property, act on a request from Parks and Recreation to use the green for its annual extravaganza on March twenty third, twenty twenty four. Uh, is there a motion?
Some will, second.
And let me try your minds, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Ten dot two, act on a request, uh, from Parks and Recreation to use the green, July thirteenth for its community band concert, and July twenty eighth, August fourth, eleventh, eighteenth, and twenty fifth, twenty twenty four, for its Sunday concerts. Is there a motion?
Some will.
And a second.
Second.
Uh, let me try your minds, all in favor?
All right.
Aye.
That motion carries. Item eleven, committee reports, anything?
No, but we're having, uh, a meeting.
This afternoon, is it?
No, it's not till twenty third.
Oh, okay. All right, item twelve, correspondence. Uh, I have two, uh, I just want to bring up under correspondence, the first of which was, uh, from Jeff Hocking, uh, and as you may recall, and I'll actually get to you. Uh, Jeff, uh, writes to me, um, on, uh, January seventeen, twenty twenty three, the request for payment of my portion of the healthcare surplus was discussed at the Board of Selectment meeting. I was not allowed to speak during the agenda item, and in my opinion, several statements were made that are, you know, incorrect. Uh, with no action taken, you said you would check with council. A month later, you advised me you were not going to entertain, uh, my requests, no formal vote was taken. I would like to request an appointment with you at your office to discuss this further, so that I can fully present my position. Apparently, attorney Peter Barrett recommended this denial as well, as a use of, uh, uh, healthcare surplus to fund the O P, uh, to fund the O P. I did ask to speak with attorney Barrett a few months ago, but he said, uh, he couldn't do that, uh, before I take, and I'll explain that. Before I take this issue outside of town review, I would like to, uh, like, I would ask that you meet to discuss it. Uh, just quickly, attorney Barrett, uh, did not provide, was not in position to provide, uh, legal advice to Jeff Hocking. Uh, that's not what town attorneys do, so that's the basis for that. And before I had a meeting with Jeff, I wanted to go back and revisit this, because I think we had consensus that we were not going to entertain it. And is that, is that, do I have? My recollection?
Yes.
Okay, so, then I will now make, uh, make the overture and meet with him. Uh, one thing that I'm, I'm not very comfortable with, uh, and I don't, I want to talk to Pete about this, but, you know, I don't like doing this under the threat of potential litigation, because the, the, like, before I take this is, issue outside the town review, but, uh, I'd be happy to meet with him. Take some advice from Peter on how I do that, uh, who should be in that meeting.
Yeah, I mean, if he's already in that position, maybe that's, wait till he doesn't. That way, you know, whatever you say in that meeting.
Can't be used against me?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, anybody has the right, please cease that, make up litigation, something appropriate to pursue, you know?
Yeah, I'm just, certain, uh, statements that may or may not be made. I mean, he already says that there was misinformation on our part last January, so why add to that potential?
I, 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 I think it's worse off not hearing people out.
Yeah.
Is this something you would consult with, uh, um, our labor, uh, attorney as well?
No, we're, I'm fully comfortable. We've had, uh, two outside, one outside review of the use of the O P funds. Actually, it was our bond counsel.
Okay.
Uh, who provided an, an opinion on this, and it's consistent with Pete's, uh, Pete's position on it. Uh, we're, you know, if we're taking it to, you know, to, to pave roads, there might be an argument about appropriateness of the use, so, this is questioning the appropriateness of the use, uh, to the O P funds. Uh, by the, by the way, uh, Jeff Hocking is a beneficiary of O P, uh, benefits. It's one of those that is fortunate enough to get the O P benefits anyway. All right, I will thank you for, uh, refreshing my memory and, uh, supporting my. But, uh, the other, uh, item correspondence, uh, it relates to, uh, correspondence from Dave Holman, who is, I could see is on, uh, the call this morning. Uh, and it relates to the App Foundation. Uh, and I just wanted to clear up a couple of things. There's been some emails going back and forth. Uh, there are a couple of points that I want to make, and I know some of you have some opinions on this as well, so let's, uh, let's talk to it. Um, the, uh, in, I believe it was, uh, the second to last email I received from, from Dave, there are some statements that I think need to be cleared up. Um, and the first one was around the application for, four thirty nine Boston Post Road was tabled at the most recent December sixth planning and zoning meeting, uh, and is a site review by ordinance. Um, it is my understanding, uh, the pending confirmation from Ann Harchen, who was out last week on vacation, uh, that the, you know, the reason the, um, the, the, the application was tabled was the applicant, uh, wasn't fully prepared to present their site. Uh, that was the reason for the, uh, for, for the, uh, the table. The next point I want to bring up, uh, the statement, obviously, this newly adopted zoning ordinance, and he's referring to, uh, uh, the zoning code rewrite, uh, uh, newly adopted ordinance was necessary before the property, four thirty nine Boston Post Road could be considered for use as a medical addiction clinic. That statement is, uh, not correct. Um, this provision existed in our whole zoning code, um, and so this was not, uh, this was not driven by, um, the most recent, uh, zoning code rewrite. This is one of those things that was moved from the old code into the new code. Uh, and it, it was clear, it's, it's clear that, uh, that's, this was not a motivation for doing so. The next one, uh, it, uh, goes to, uh, a contention, uh, and a question, did you, uh, Governor for Selectman Matt Hawaii, who had at least one conversation with the CEO of App Foundation, uh, advise App that there would be no problems moving the project through different planning and zoning? Have conversations with town planner Ann Harchen or anyone on a, on a given planning and zoning commission prior to their discussing and adopting ordinance PRB. Two things, uh, that I'll respond with, maybe three. Ann Harchen wasn't even in her employ when the zoning code was approved, the most recent zoning code. She actually, that went through, uh, through Jamie Stein's direction, but, uh, Ann was not employee at the time. Uh, so, um, and no, uh, there were no conversations relative to the App Foundation, uh, by me, or I, obviously by extension, I think, uh, Ann, uh, with the planning and zoning commission. And then, uh, this contention that I, that I had advised App that there would be no problems moving through the project, with the project through, but planning and zoning mission is also. But planning and zoning mission is also, uh, not, not the case. Uh, it was a straightforward conversation that they had to satisfy the zoning requirements as they were currently written. By the way, the App Foundation, uh, has some experience in this, in their, uh, in their development of facilities in Haven and in North Haven. Uh. And then, uh, the last one I just want to bring up is, uh, was it your intent to deceive the good people of Guilford, based on your comments in the Connecticut Examiner article? Eight seventeen, twenty twenty-three, into believing that the planning and zoning will hold a public hearing? I think I've, that, I think everyone's seen some of the emails, uh, I actually, the direct quote from the thing says, uh, says to the contrary, I did not say specifically that they would. I said, if required by the zoning code, public hearings, and clearly zoning does not require, so, um. I just wanted to clear up a couple of those things, uh, I know some other folks, uh, have some concerns about, uh, what's going on with the App Foundation, and I'll open it up to.
So, yeah, Matt, um, obviously we. I believe we all received a number of, of emails from Mr. Holman, and I've done my best to parse through those. Um, most of his comments seem to be focused on the process. The P and Z is following, with regard to this particular site plan. Uh, but opposed to site plan review in general, uh, near as I can tell, but you know, uh, always. Cautious about paraphrasing someone else's writing, but that's what I'm taking away from. This quite luminous series of emails, they're mostly directed at some to Ann, uh. Obviously, that process is governed by state statute, which is the point you mentioned, the newspaper, Arbo, and their P and Z regs. Um, and I've not seen in Mr. Holman's comments, anything to suggest that there is a violation of that process. As it relates to what P and Z's done, either statutorily or through their regs, so, to the extent that most of what he's writing is. Procedural, uh. It's got every right to examine that process, and you know, it has its own appeal rights, I suppose, at some point, but. Uh, he, he, he. He, to that end, I think, has availed himself of FOIA request, and that's in process, and there are people responding to that in due course. Here, uh, in the town. Um. Again, just essentially paraphrasing, but obviously his actual. Request would control, I don't mean to box him in by what I'm saying, but he's very concerned about whether there was any product discussion. Or more to the point, for a FOIA request, communications, written communications related to. Uh, to propose this particular proposed use by this particular applicant. Um, which as Matt just sort of said, that reg didn't change and came through, and so the likelihood of there being. Any substantial changes there, and I know P and Z worked endlessly on this thing, on and on and on, I'm sure there's three-year process. Quite a bit of discussion about quite a bit of properties, um, but I'm also sure they're really. Careful and thoughtful folks over there, and they put a lot of energy into getting this exactly right, the idea that they would. Spot zoning is a phrase gets thrown around, but the idea that they would take advantage of a particular property for a particular applicant is sort of interesting. Um, you know, the idea was to over all the entire regulations, so I'm sure that's, that's, uh. Where they were headed, uh. So, in any event, that, that particular zone, P R B three. Again, as I recall, and as I, you know, put plans, but you seem to be saying the same thing, has, wasn't changed, came through. In any event, um. At essence, Mr. Holman's comments strike me that he's asking us, the board of selectmen, to disrupt the function of planning and zoning. Uh, with regard to their evaluation of this particular proposed use. I mean, he makes various requests slash demands candidly, uh, regarding various additional hearings. Uh, notifications beyond those required by planning and zoning, um. I'm not sure how that recognizes the landowner's use. Of their property as it relates to those very same regulations, I mean, people are entitled to a certain amount of certainty. Um, and to the extent that this is a medical use authorized through in that zone. If somehow that steps outside of that, um. Anyway, I, I don't see that, that anyone, Mr. Holman has not said, nor has he identified anyone who said. That planning and zoning is doing anything improper in their evaluation of this particular site plan. Um, to the extent that he's asking us to disrupt that, I don't see anything about this particular application that would suggest we should, that's just me. Uh, so. Appreciate all the input, anybody in town always wants to send us?
There was a specific request in the correspondence that we call a town meeting for this purpose, and. Doesn't, it doesn't seem appropriate, the town meeting can't take any action, there's no, there's no purpose to that. But people have concerns about something that's going to happen in town, they deserve to have their questions addressed. And I don't know what the right mechanism is for that.
So that's a good point, uh, I believe, talked about this in the past, the App Foundation would be willing to come out and come into the community and do a presentation. On their, on their organization, their program, their respective benefits, and how, how these, uh. Facilities are operating in other communities like North Haven, particularly, which is much closer example to the kind of facility we'd have here than. Some in, in, in Greater Haven. So, uh.
We've kind of modeled that in, in our approach to affordable, to, to renewing the affordable housing. Opportunities in town with having various informational meetings. At either the library meeting room, or the community center meeting room. Where it has nothing to do with zoning or selectmen issues, it just has to do with information. Uh, in the beginning, we just talked about what is affordable housing, how is it different from low-income housing? Why is it important, all that, and then when we picked, um, a developer for this particular project, uh, down. Woodruff property, we had them come to talk, and you know, they were purely informational meetings, and. Um, at a couple of meetings, we probably had about sixty or seventy people, and maybe. We had maybe thirty or forty, but I thought they were, were helpful at the time, and so, uh. I think if we had the App Foundation come, it would not be, because we're calling a town meeting, I, I totally agree with Lou, um. And Matt, I don't believe that we have, uh, broken any rules in this process, neither P and Z or B O S. But I, I think perhaps offering, uh, an educational opportunity, why not, I mean, why not? I mean, maybe nobody comes, maybe somebody comes, we, or maybe we tape it, you know, I, I don't know, but I, I don't think it would hurt, I mean. To tell you the truth, I was, I, I, I maybe had about one percent of awareness of this kind of a, a service, so. I personally would be very happy to attend a meeting, not because I'm against it, just to get a little more information. Yeah. Especially as board of selectmen, if we get asked questions, maybe these know a little bit more. That's my piece, and I just have one other question, because I read through all the emails too, but now I can't remember, um. What did Mr. Holman need through F O I A, what was he looking for then?
Correspondence to me and the town officials and the App Foundation, if this was the least one, but I don't quote the other.
I thought it was related to P and Z, and the. And whether there were any changes to the zone, but yeah, whatever, whatever, it's, I mentions it in a couple of places, and. The, 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 it's being, uh, accepted as a FOIA request, it's being processed as a FOIA request.
That's right, Karen P. I T. will be. Be working through, is working through that process.
To, you know, to address both Susan's and Sandy's points about information, I mean. Yeah. I, I think that makes a lot of sense, because, uh. There is enough. Questions or discussion or unknowns, uh, throughout the community about what exactly. Because words are being thrown about, uh, of what this is or isn't, so I think an informational thing, uh. Gathering or whatever, whatever you want to call it, has some sense, as long as to lose point. It doesn't interfere, or. Or, or, uh, create any situation where we are interfering with the process, because we've been very careful about the process. We've tried to do things, uh, well as informative and open as we could, and, uh. You know, you hate the money of borders or potentially money of wars, so I, I, I would hope that we would be. Bringing a service to the community, but also explaining that, you know, process is, you know, this. And this is what we are doing. Yeah, so I, I think an informational thing, there are, there is enough discussion about, uh. About what is, what are we bringing to the community, or what is coming to them, so, you know, not that we are bringing to the community, but what. Potentially coming to the community. Uh, and, and it probably could diffuse a few things, frankly, to take care of misinformation.
Yeah, yeah, good point.
But I don't want to jeopardize the process, because to lose point, I think, uh. P and Z, et cetera, have been very careful about the process, so far so good, so.
Yes, yeah, clearly, uh, are, are trying to put our thumb on the scale. P and Z, process procedures, and, and what is defined in our zoning code is, is inappropriate for us. That doesn't mean we aren't entitled to our personal opinions about this facility, if it is, uh, in compliance with the zoning code.
And, and, yeah, there's one thing for somebody wanting to get involved, having concerns, uh, but to. The, the, to utilize. Regulations to make some personal agenda point or something, isn't of any value to the community either, so. You know, I just want to be careful that we don't open the door to some stuff, so.
Right, and one of the doors is potentially open, if planning and zoning were to entertain denying this application. Would be legal action by the, the, by the applicant, uh, and we have, we have. Basically no standing, because our, our zoning code allows for that type of facility. So, as a medical facility.
In a way, that's, that seems very clear. It's not, it's, it's look up on the map where you're located, you refer to the chart of what you can and can't do there. And it's, and it's pretty black and white.
I also, step on it, I also sort of point to this very subject. The few substantive points in the various emails seem to be relate to. Location of this facility relative to the location of certain residential neighborhoods, and if there were in fact distance requirements. In the code, for instance, what we're considering with cannabis. Um, you know, so many feet from so many facilities. This very thoughtful process of amending the regs would have previously included that, the fact that something happens to be near a neighborhood that happens to be near Route One is. I suppose a subject that somebody could litigate, but I mean, I'd be surprised to see if the, you know, the courts would sort of just sort of randomly impose, well, this is supposed to. Something that you happen to not like, therefore. We're going to take that factor into consideration, they're going to be guided by what the language of the regs are.
Okay, anything further? No. All right, uh, any other correspondence? Uh, old business? Uh, I just have one piece, um, uh, as we get, go through our budget, uh. Making process, which is well underway, I think, Department budgets were due in, uh, last Friday. Um. I am, uh, I've, I've just about finished crafting a letter to, uh, some of the merchants at town, or some of the folks at town. That have supported the Guilford Fair Day Parade, I think you guys remember that. Um, so, uh, we may allocate some funds, but I'm not, I don't want specific funds in, in the budget. Until such time as we get, uh, a better feel for, so, and as it turns out, that letter's going to go over, uh, my signature. Uh, the committee opted out of having it go.
I would have no problem if you wanted to go out there, this entire course.
Thank you. Good point. Good. Thank you, Charles. Any, any other?
Yeah, the, I was wondering if we had, uh. Or veteran police or any other commissions had an opportunity to weigh in on cannabis issue we're waiting here.
Yeah, and not yet, uh, I've not heard anything from them at this point, uh, not sure they've had an opportunity to run their genitals.
How, how we coax that along? Why is moving along?
We, we happen to know the, uh. Chair of the Police Commission, I think we can get that on the agenda. All right, new business. There you go. Public forum, uh, anyone wishing to address the board, three minutes on, uh, any issue? Um. Say, name and address for the record, anyone wishing to address the board?
Yes, I would like to address the board.
All right, Dave, go ahead, name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Dave Holman, six Sparrow Bush Lane, uh, in Guilford. I became aware of this, um, addiction clinic, methadone clinic, coming to Guilford when one of my neighbors sent me. An article from the Connecticut Examiner, uh, on November twenty-ninth. Um, since that time, I've sent you several emails, all of you. Uh, asking you to, uh, have a public, uh, a special town meeting. Uh, per section seven dash one of the town charter on, uh, on this project. Um, the people of Guilford need to be able to weigh in on this, nobody knows about this, all right? I've been walking, I live in Sunrise, I'm not too far from where this, uh, project is going to, uh, uh, be. And, uh, none of my neighbors know about this, uh. Uh, another one of my neighbors, uh, polled the businesses around where this is going to be, none of them know about it. Uh, this property was sold with the understanding. That it would be used for a methadone clinic without any public input at all, or without any. Uh, uh, impact studies done on, uh, on what, what would result if this came to town. I've sent you articles from, uh, the Yale Daily News, where it talks about New Hallville. Uh, uh, a, a black residential section of Connecticut. Um, and, uh, how they reacted to this, but the story was the same, the property was sold with, with no notification. The mayor was all for this thing, uh, they planned to bring four hundred patients, uh, or addicts. Uh, into the community with all the problems that would come with it. Uh, I'm at, and I've asked you to go on the record and take a vote, a public vote. As to whether you're in favor of holding a public meeting on this, and I call on you to do this again, and I call on you to. Uh, stop any procedural, uh, um, uh, events necessary to approving this. Uh, with the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, until you do impact studies. I asked you to take a vote tonight, uh, and, and go on the record whether you want a public meeting on this or not. Or whether you want to hold up things until impact studies can be done.
Next, Dave, uh, anyone else wishing to address the board? Going once, anyone else wishing to address the board? Going twice? Close, um, there being no, uh.
There's some other folks, anybody else have any other topics?
Any, yeah, any topics.
No, just allow it.
Just general, just visitors.
Thanks for being here.
Yeah. All right, uh, with that, I'll let it take a motion to adjourn.
Some will second.
Uh, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you all.